I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, for our agenda tonight, we just have a few little changes. One is under the consent agenda to acknowledge receipt of November 2, 2011 memo, and then to fill in the appointment of Mary Hess under the Celine River Greenway Alliance. And do we have any additions to under discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to add, I'd like to add Senate Bill 137.
Okay. And I also will talk a little bit about trips, you know, activities, because we were supposed to report on that from the last meeting. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved second.
Moved road, second moral. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's my great honor to have an opportunity to have a letter of appreciation and recognition for the Duncan family. You could come up, please. Maybe bring James too, would that be interested in coming up? Bring your son, would that be okay?
Sort of, this is sort of, I guess right here. If we could face the council, sorry, James, would you turn around? The audience, that would be great, because this is on behalf of the city council to all of you to our citizenry. So this is Jim and Marcia Duncan and their son James, and we, sorry, the city of Celine wanted to do a letter of recognition on behalf of all the work that you've done with your business in the Celine community. So I'd like to read the letter. Whereas Jim and Marcia Duncan opened the Calico Cat in Manchester in 1975, and then moved to downtown Celine in 1982, operating their unique gift shop from two different downtown locations, 109 West Michigan Avenue and the old Methodist Church at 117 South ian Arbor Street, which they purchased and renovated in 1990. And whereas Jim and Marcia Duncan have been actively involved in the Celine area Chamber of Commerce, the Celine Downtown Merchants Association, and in the early years, the Uptown Celine Association, and diligently worked with then-mayor Don Shelton and others on the original streetscape project, which means they've been around a long time, which I'm going to get to at the end, which transformed Celine's downtown into an attractive place to visit and shop. And whereas Jim and Marcia Duncan have owned and operated the Calico Cat gift shop for more than 36 years, 29 of those years in Celine specializing in children's books, collectibles, gifts, and Christmas items. And whereas the Calico Cat became known as a destination store and has been an integral part of Celine's downtown drawing many people into Celine to shop and dine. And whereas the Calico Cat has provided employment to many of our residents throughout the years contributing to the area's economy, and has been an important factor in the continued vitality of our downtown. And whereas the three store kiddies, Callie, Duchess, and Marley, brought an element of surprise, delight, and fun to the adults and children visiting the store, and will be dearly missed along with their owners, Jim and Marcia Duncan. And whereas the closing of the Calico Cat this summer was a very sad event for downtown Celine and all of Celine, and will be missed by our residents and the many shoppers who frequent in this shop looking for that special gift. Now therefore, I Gretchen Driscoll, Mayor of the city of Celine, on behalf of the Celine City Council and the citizens of Celine, do hereby recognize and thank Jim and Marcia Duncan for their many contributions to the Celine community and their 29 years of excellence in retail merchandising in downtown Celine, with sincere best wishes for our much deserved retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I wanted to read that, but on a really personal note, Calico Cat has been a really important part of my life, because I've been here 23 years and I raised children here. And I would come all the time for children's gifts and books, and you always had this wonderful selection of books. And I know a community will really, really miss you, and I know you've done a lot for our downtown, and we're doing the next iteration of the Main Street, we're working on that, and I know you helped with the first one. So thank you so much. And James, it's an honor to get to meet you finally. I've heard so much about you, and I know Jim's been working behind the scenes so diligently to keep the store going, and so I know you, I hope you have something that you'd like to say, but we really appreciate everything that you've done in our community.
Well, thank you, dear. It doesn't seem like 36 years has gone by, and I'm still 39, so I don't quite understand that concept. I've got tons, tons of memories, especially when we were restoring the church building, which was in terrible disrepair and about to fall down. And one of the nice things that happened was every time I went over to see how they were coming, there were important things happening. So I have about 350 pictures that I'm forming into a notebook to give to the, to the church. But our children were quite angry, because they said, "You never took pictures of us like that, never." One of the other wonderful things, and I think the nicest compliment that a person can get when they're in retail, is to get acknowledgement from children. Through the years, it was so humbling to me to have children just love to come to the store. And shortly, oh, I'd say last summer, midsummer, a young fellow came in with his dad, and he must have been about 16, and, and they did some shopping, and just as they were leaving, he turned to his dad and said, "Dad, I just love this store." And it just gave me goosebumps to think that I would have, our store would have that kind of an impression. The latest thing that happened was, when we were closing this store, we had a lot of fixtures left, and we gave a lot of them to the Washington Christian Academy for their new store to support scholarships. And what we didn't realize, and were surprised by, was that we began to get little notes in the mail from all the children at the school. And one of them will stay with me forever, because he said, the little boy was around a fifth grader, and he said, "We so appreciate all the things that you gave to our store so that we can have more children come to our school. You brought Jesus to us." And that, I'll always remember that. And that's kind of how we felt about our store, and we hope to have brought something of Jesus to this community and to have made it a better place. Thank you.
This really is Marcia's night, and I'll just defer to her. So, thank you.
Again, thanks, thank you all very much.
Okay, citizen comments on agenda items are in the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or questions on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. If there's no comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved approved, submitted.
Second.
Moved road, second Terharr. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under unfinished business, item 05123, the Celine River Greenway Alliance. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the November 3, 2011 memo from City Manager Campbell, that the Celine City Council hereby approves or does not approve the amendment to the bylaws of the Celine River Greenway Alliance by adding Section 12 SRG-A Funding Administration Collection and Disbursement Procedures, which is the city a milestone to act as fiduciary for the SRGA funds, and to confirm the appointment of Mary Hess to serve on the Celine River Greenway Board as the city of Celine's second representative. Do we have a motion?
Moved approved.
Second.
Moved road, second Terharr. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any new business? If not, we'll go on to discussion. Do we have any commissioner committee reports from council members? Mr. Rhodes?
I'd like to give a quick report on the Environmental Commission, who co-sponsored a electronic recycling event with the teen center, the Fifth Corner, that took place this last Saturday. And a few statistics, besides the fact that it was great weather, which I can take credit for, but I loved it, we had 40 volunteers who participated in that event. And just to demonstrate the fact that it was a community-wide support, I'd like to run through some of the major categories that they came from. So we had three city council members, we had three city employees, we had four folks from the Environmental Commission, we had 12 teens, we had six from the Fifth Corner Board members, and then we had 12 citizens at large. So it was great. And, you know, it sort of proves that, the point, that if you provide an opportunity for people to volunteer, and you give them something useful to do, and don't ask too much of them, because they were two-hour shifts, people are really happy to do it. So we had a great time, collected 84 pallets of electronic waste, which, I don't know, several hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably initial purchase, but that's the way it goes. And then we got $1,078 in cash donations. So we suspect that probably when we get the check from the recycle company, that we will have about $2,000 of income for that one day's event, and that'll keep the teen center going for another one to two months. For comparison purposes, when we did this in June, we got, we collected 63 pallets, so we had 21 more this time, but almost the same amount in cash donations, $1,014 back then. So it was, it went well. We will do another one on April the 28th, 2012. So those of you who missed us this time, or whose electronic equipment bites the dust in the meantime, just kind of hold on to it and bring it to us. And for the general information, you don't have to be a resident of the city of Celine to bring things. You also don't have to be just a resident, you can have a business. So we got a lot of things from businesses. And the other thing for the Environmental Commission is, we are meeting soon, and we are, our current major charge is to explore how to have the greatest impact on our community by the Environmental Commission, so that we're not just out there kind of blanketing the community with all kinds of information. We want, we want to make an actual impact on people's lives and how they do things. And I should mention that Jeff Fordyce arranged with Waste Management to have a cardboard recycle container put in place for us at the e-waste event, and that was really helpful. And also Brian Sweeney of Heritage Lawn donated the use of his forklift, which I managed to drive without running over anybody for the day, so we had a good time. That's it for me on my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioner committee reports? Mr. Terharr?
Just to let you know that the youth council had their first meeting this earlier in October, and they're looking forward to getting going on a few projects. They're hoping to support Winterfest and some of the other activities that are coming up, maybe even the, if we have it again, the cycle event that we had earlier last year. They're also looking for fundraisers, so they're hoping to provide that, and we'll be in contact with the community when that starts happening, so it looks like it's going to be a good busy year.
Any other commissioner committee reports? I will report out on Planning Commission. We met and talked about the application for the BP site plan, and it's coming back before planning, this Wednesday, actually. Is that this Wednesday?
That's correct, Mayor.
Sorry. This last month has sort of disappeared, but anyhow. And there were some revisions made to the original proposal, and I think it's a good plan. Some of the suggestions and requests that the Planning Commission members requested have been implemented in the proposal for this meeting, so it will be moving forward. It's, the preliminary site plan is up for, and then there's also a special use permit that's going to be involved with that, so look forward to seeing how that moves forward. Is there any other commission committee reports?
We, Celtic Festival earlier this weekend, just like to report, the Celtic Festival continues to find ways to become less dependent upon the city, and we started to go over some of our music choices for this year, and some new site arrangements, and some new ideas for festival, and some of the music choices are pretty exciting. It depends on how the contracts go, but it looks like another, another good year.
Are there any other further commissioner committee reports, reports or other announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
Not sure if this really fits under that category, but I did prepare my notes from my experience at the October 5 and 7 MML convention, which I typed up, and we'll just pass them around, and they're, they're too lengthy to try to review here. But for those out in the audience who might like to see them, you can either contact me and I can give you a copy of my notes, and/or I posted them this afternoon on my blog, davidrhodesceline.com.
To that point, I actually put it down farther, but I don't have mine. And I don't have mine from the White House either, and so what I'd like to propose is I do them all at one time for the, because it's been a little bit crazy, partly because we've been spending a lot of time on the personal property tax town hall issue meeting, which I'm going to just push up there to report some other announcements, because we, or sort of, we postponed the meeting to the 14th, and we're still sort of waiting to hear about where the legislation stands, if it's even going to come out in this session. So we're actually, because it's on the agenda to talk about, I think we are going to hold off at this moment until we hear from our lobbyists at the league, possibly tomorrow. But it's possible that we just want to wait till the new year, because the talk, and we're hearing from MML, as I just spoke with Dan, I called Summer twice today and I haven't heard back, and spoke with Dan, who's the executive director, around 5:00, and he said, "It doesn't look like anything, they, they still don't have a program to introduce." So we're thinking about pulling back on that. In the meantime, however, I did do, I've been asked to be a guest blogger on Concentrate, which is a e-newsletter, and I'm trying to figure out how to get it either on my Facebook or on the city site or something, because I spent a lot of time on it. I did four articles, one on Main Street, one on transportation, one on personal property tax and impacts it would have, not only on our community, but on the county. And then I just did one today on our Michigan Municipal League book that we bought for all the council members about the economy of place. And so try to figure out a way to get that, you know, on a more stable local site. So, but yeah, I've been working a lot on that this last week, so my apologies. But right, at the moment, I think Todd and I, I talked briefly before the meeting, that we're thinking, unless we hear from Summer that something's happening in Lansing this week, it probably, they only have another couple of weeks of session, and it doesn't seem like it's, it's too big a issue to run pretty quickly. So we'll keep you apprised of that. I know, Tran, that you were interested in keeping on top of that. So believe you me, we would love to be, you know, talking about it more, in a more formal town hall setting, and as soon as it seems like it's the appropriate timing, we will.
So we're going to, our plan is to hold off until we hear from Summer from the league as to whether or not we are indeed going to convene a personal property tax seminar on Monday.
Right.
My suggestion, Mayor, is that, well, first, let me take a step back. My understanding of where the legislation at, is at, excuse me, is very similar to yours, in that it doesn't look like anything's going to be moving before the end of the calendar year, acknowledging again that they have very few session days scheduled between now and when the calendar year expires. Having said that, even if Summer were to contact you or Todd tomorrow, I'm concerned that we haven't done enough promotion of this to hold a successful and meaningful event on the 14th. So my suggestion would be that we postpone it, and once we hear something more concrete from the league, that we schedule it, and then do our utmost to promote it, and make sure that our citizens know how important it is, and of course, encourage them to attend.
Right, we did have in the queue, the library, the school, school rep, county person, and possibly community college person, that we're, we're going to try to have a panel. But we did talk to Summer last week, and it's, it's sort of this like moving target, basically, and it's been frustrating, but, you know, we want to be as effective as possible, so I agree with you that it is late in the game. But we're also concerned that if something gets introduced, it will move quickly.
Sure.
So that's why we're sort of trying to set it up.
Well, I think, you know, get, get our ducks in a row, and get all these people lined up to present, and then, you know, conceivably at a moment's notice, we can contact them and set something up. But I would rather do a good thorough event than, than a quick one.
Okay, so, sorry for skipping around like that. Are there other reports or announcements? Mr. Terharr?
I attended the SEMCOG, that's Southeast Michigan Council of Governments Assembly meeting on October 27th in Howell. There were a number of reports. The main item of business was another step in the SEMCOG's ongoing work on the, the program that is entitled Creating Success in Southeast Michigan. The Assembly approved the next step in that process, which is performance measures that were developed. And the outcomes and performance measures are intended to be used to focus SEMCOG's further efforts and guide work across the areas that they are concerned with, concerned with and working on, including transportation and infrastructure, economic development, and environmental protection. And it also seemed to me that the, that those performance measures would be an interesting supplement to council's planning meeting on November 19th, so I hope that we can distribute a copy of those. There was also a thought-provoking presentation from Mr. Jamie Volmer, who was a very successful businessman, and who midway in his career turned his attention to educational reform, and now has become a very outspoken advocate for educational reform. That's it, thank you.
Were there any other reports or announcements? Okay, speaking of which, the review of the strategic plan. Mr. Campbell, you want to talk, speak to that? What we're doing, next steps, you want to talk about that too, right?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Mayor. As you, so you recall, try and do an update throughout the year, reference status of city staff as far as how we're doing on achieving the strategic plan initiatives, the goals and objectives that the city council does, adopts on an annual basis. So I think this is timely, as a quick reminder, the November 19th retreat with the city council strategic planning, that's an all-day Saturday event from 10 until about 4:30, 5 o'clock, at the library. But this is, this will help, another thing to help prepare you, as well as some other items that I'll briefly talk after I get done doing this. So I'll just, I'm just going to go down the list, sustaining vibrant downtown, expand efforts, flowers, holiday lighting, benches, trash acceptable, receptacles. As of today, we had a successful Bee Blumen campaign in 2011 for the downtown hanging flower baskets and planter boxes, and in partnership with the Route 12 to Main Street group, we kicked off for fiscal year 12, that kicked off a few weeks ago, I think it was about a month ago or so, for the fiscal year 2012 Bee Blumen campaign. So we're, we're excited about that. Implement form-based code in central business districts in the downtown area. As of today, form-based code for downtown overlay is currently in process of being adopted. Public work session was conducted in the summer of 2011, and currently the Planning Commission is reviewing the language of the proposed ordinance, which then they'll make a recommendation at some point to the city council for approval. Continue to work on revitalization tools, no change. Right now, there's, there are some tools located on the website. Attain a net increase of two businesses while retaining current business diversity, and again, this is, remember, this is in the downtown. We have new businesses thus far in fiscal year 2012, Downtown Diner and Reincarnation's Resale. Three businesses have closed thus far in fiscal year 12, Little Caesar's Pizza, CC Sweet Shop, and Calico Cat. Develop options for financing and construction of the community open-air pavilion, currently no change. To support the development of Celine Main Street program by endorsing and supporting the Celine Astoria Downtown Alliance's proper application to the Michigan Main Street program for the select level, which I believe we're also going to talk in a few minutes about as well. Update, Route 12 to Main Street Board is currently working on completing the application for the select level of the Michigan Main Street program. Maintain financial stability. Narrow municipal employees retirement system, the MERS pension system, unfunded employee pension liability gap, no change. You may recall that last year, the city did make an additional supplemental $825,000 payment to MERS to bring this increase to see's overall funding percentage to approximately 74 percent, about a 6 percent increase. Evaluate risk of reduction in city operations, staff, financial ordinance concerns, public works, explore possibilities of consolidation and prioritization of municipal services. As of November 7th, the city had explored partnering with Pittsfield Township for emergency 911 dispatch services, but was not able to move forward. Labor negotiations benefit same for our groups. Public Act 152 of 2011, or Senate Bill 7, requires municipalities implement a hard cap or an 80 percent employer share to a 20 percent employee share for healthcare costs unless the city council officially opts out of the requirement on an annual basis. So that'll be something actually that will be coming up at the, we'll have a work session, I believe, on the 21st meeting of November. Maintain the current tax rate, provide citizen and business affordability, there's no change. City councils maintain the same tax rate of 15.53 mils for the past seven consecutive years. Build community spirit and civic engagement. Volunteer fair engaging community members to develop stronger volunteer base. To date, there's no change, but that's, where city staff potentially have a, some type of a volunteer fair, where all the different, at least the city boards and commissions would have tables, if you will, where people could come and, kind of like a job fair, and look at the different, what the different commissions are and what they would offer. Recruitment and information tables at all community events to promote city boards and commissions. Updated, city staff developed a volunteering brochure that was displayed at information tables at the 2011 Celine Summer Fest, as well as the Celine Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest events. Take a more active role in maintaining Celine Leadership Institute for progressive funding, operating supplies, and further development of boards and commission members. The city provided some minimal classroom supplies, string benders, copy paper, that type of thing, this, for this, the current class it is going on. Have more commissions involved in local events. Of course, we heard about the Environmental Commission participating in community events, provide informational booth, and attend to be used at community events, as well as the other events, the e-waste and, and at the other community events such as Harvest of the Arts. Arts and Culture Committee completed the downtown street art furniture in fiscal year 2012, also working on a community art walk. And then, of course, Parks Commission is also, didn't put that down there, but the Parks Commission continues to do things such as the Green Thumb Award and the annual park cleanup. Improve volunteerism and community involvement by building passion, interest, and a desire to help the community, no change to date. Improve communication, develop a relationship with a community member to assist municipal departments with writing, marketing, and drafting in form of media releases, no long-term change on that. Establish a visioning session with the Celine City Council, Celine Area Schools, Celine District Library, Celine Downtown Merch Association, Celine Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. No change to date, but to be scheduled, that's, I see that as something similar, as last year when the city council met with the chamber board, so, but this would just be a much larger meeting with, with a number of folks. Keep websites up to date, relevant, user-friendly, and utilizes a primary marketing tool to encourage business to access its unique features. It's ongoing. Some departments have reason to turn over information quicker than others, such as a rec center, for instance. Access resource, resources provided by the Michigan Municipal League and the National League of Cities and state government. Again, update ongoing, as the mayor mentioned. Again, update ongoing, as the mayor mentioned, most recently MML book, the economics of place, the value of building communities around people, for City Council Strategic Planning Retreat, and then the NLC, the warranties, the utility line warranty program that's being offered for both water service lines and sanitary sewer leads. Be a sustainable city. Empower the Environmental Commission to develop and expand educational opportunities for citizens interested in sustainability and give them tools to bring conservation into their daily lives. Second Annual Rain Barrel Class was completed, conducted second electronic waste recycling event, as well as, as Mr. Rhodes mentioned, that that's their vision, that that's their charge right now, is determine how best to do that. Explore developing new strategies for allowing and promoting alternative energy in residential and commercial areas, currently no change. Expand capacity of recycle bins for residential and commercial users, provide recycling opportunities, centers for shoppers and pedestrians in downtown area and all public events. To date, Environmental Commission purchased recycling cans for downtown Celine. City launching residential large cart, 96 gallon curb cart for curbside recycling. That's, I believe, if you're interested, that is $4 a month fee. City launched new multifamily apartment complex recycling program this current year. City also implemented recycling boxes for all public events. Ensure Celine sets an example for environmental efforts that are cost-effective. City is currently partnering with DT, DTE, and LED streetlight replacement program in various locations around the community, and that's, we look for that to take place very soon, because they had to do that by the end of the year. By the end of the year, right? Enhance quality of life, address blighted development areas, no change. 147 West Michigan Ave. has been cleaned up, graded, grass seeded, and put up for sale. Promote a healthy community by adding to existing opportunities for healthier lifestyles and providing information and quality choices. Ongoing, reference to Parks and Recreation Activities, the Pink Out Promotion in October 2011, various fitness classes offered, Celine Farmers Market is also expanding to offer a winter farmers market that actually kicked off this past weekend at Liberty School. So from November through April, we'll have the winter farmers market. Develop a diversity initiative in partnership with community organizations, currently to date, no change. Access grant funding for cultural and recreational amenities and activities. To date, ongoing connecting communities grant from Washington County for the Joint City Library Non-Motorized Pathway Project. CARES grant funding for the same pathway project. Upgrade infrastructure. Evaluate and identify funding stream for transportation system, no change, possible 280, Public Act 283 funding through Washington County Road Commission. I believe the county board commissioners are slated to vote on that, I believe, sometime this month. Plan commercial district infrastructure needs more formally, such as the West Side Streetscape and Long Range Plan, to date, no change. Prioritize investments using long-range plan and recognizing available incentives and programs. And specifically evaluate and update capital improvement plan annually, that's ongoing, and we're hoping that, it is a little bit late in coming, but we are getting close to a draft to present to you all. Promote and implement non-motorized pathway program, no change. And lastly, intensify economic development opportunities, involve business from east and west in ideas and events, to date, no change. Develop programs that promote business mentoring and coaching to increase entrepreneurship in the community, no change. Last winter, I completed the Trinity of Management Training, as well as the city partnering with the MORE program, which is an entrepreneurial program that will help put entrepreneurs in direction and put them in contact with, with resources that, in communities around the Grow and enhance our domestic and foreign industrial commercial business base by expanding upon German-owned businesses. Schurtrier, well, Schurtrier expanded facilities fiscal year 2011, 2012, they actually just received their certificate of occupancy, I believe it was last week or two weeks ago. Liebherr Aerospace currently expanding facilities. And then also, I hope I pronounce this correctly, Klingenberg Oerlikon Tech Center, which is housed in Liebherr facility, but it is separate from Liebherr. Leveraging our proximity slash relationships to Toyota Research Facility for commercial benefit, no change to date. And lastly, targeting and attracting large and small green and alternative businesses, no change to date. As I mentioned, the reminder for the November 19th retreat, we'll also be providing to the City Council, I had department heads do SWOT analysis, as well as we'll be handing out information to you all, too, a worksheet that, and we did this, for those that were here, my very first year here, we had a shortened timeframe from when I started to, for, help for budget direction, I had a worksheet that listed some priorities and that you all thought I should focus on in, in different areas and different departments. So we're going to provide you that worksheet, we also had department heads fill out that information, too, so I'm going to get that out in your packets this Thursday. So you can look at that and fill those out and get those back, and we'll put those together and, so you can have that information prepared for our 19th retreat.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the document that Todd's updated? Mr. Rhodes?
There's one item that I failed to pass on to Mr. Campbell under, be a sustainable city under that category, for the Environmental Commission, where you've done the update. The thing that I failed to mention to you was that Environmental Commission has established a relationship with the county now that has resulted in our receiving a large number of printed materials covering environmental issues at no cost to the city. And besides the places listed within this document already, we have also distributed them at the summer farmers market. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Pena?
One more. Under community spirit and civic engagement, we talked about volunteer fair, engaging community members, and developing strong volunteer base. Let me know what the Celtic Festival, how it can fit into that. I see you've listed the Summer Fest and Harvest Fest, as far as information tables developing list for volunteers.
Yeah, absolutely, and partly because we didn't have it ready for Celtic. But thank you, yeah, we will do that. Thank you.
I had two things. There's actually three businesses downtown, Oxygen Plus, that went in the Town and Country Cycle Shop, and then, under economic opportunities, MEDC has a pilot economic gardening program through the Low Foundation, and I pushed on Spark as the vehicle locally for, and I pushed out two names of local businesses for them to be submitted, so I don't really know where that stands, but that was also something in mentoring and entrepreneurship. So we can talk about it later, but that, we can probably add that.
Thank you.
Pray tell, didn't Mangiamos open since this document would first have been drafted?
This is for fiscal year 12.
Okay, and they, they opened in 11.
Right, right, so, but you are correct, I mean, this document was drafted before that.
In the fall of last year, okay.
Right, fall, winter, correct.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks for the update, I know it takes a lot of time to keep up with all that, so, thank you. The Main Street application, I, as is mentioned in the strategic plan, there is going to be an application filed on December 2nd. I think a couple meetings ago, I mentioned that there was some thought about postponing that to the following year, but there's a lot of interest, and the state also feels that we are a great candidate. So a combination of local interest and state feedback I got up in, at Grand Rapids at the MML conference, combined to make everybody be very eager to submit an application, and Cindy Zuko, who's the chair, actually wants us to have our picture taken with a banner tonight, so, anyhow, to help for the promotion piece of that application. Any questions about that? I talked a little bit about Town Hall meeting, and then Speed Limit on Michigan, Todd, I think you wanted to bring that up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not that information, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, Chief Button received a call from Sergeant McGee, from Traffic Division, from Michigan State Police, informing us that our, certain areas of our, of Michigan Ave., US 12, will be increased in speed. And that's based on the law, in a nutshell, essentially, they do traffic study and the 85th percentile of the speed, so the, whatever speed, 85 percent of the people are traveling, that's potentially what the speed gets changed to. So right now, they're proposing from industrial to hopper, instead of 45, that'll be, that would be 50. And it'll still be 45 from hopper to kevling, from kevling to Harris is 40. Downtown will maintain 30, from Harris to Lewis. From Lewis to Mills will be 40, and from Mills on out will be 45. Sergeant McGee has made it, has offered to come and speak to the City Council, which I wouldn't be surprised to go up on that, but, but also, I've also contacted Representative Womack's office to see if they can help in any way. I mean, the law's the law, I understand that, but I, I, from my perspective, certainly does not promote a pedestrian-friendly, non-motorized-friendly community with those speeds. And I understand the MDOT, they want to, you know, they want to move traffic, and I understand that, but it's already, again, even though, even though the downtown is still going to stay at 30, I mean, there's, we still have some pedestrian-friendly issues as it currently at least stands, so.
Any comments or questions from Council?
My only comment, I guess, is that I agree with, I hate to see those speed limits go up even higher. As you said, it's dangerous enough out there, and it also seems to make little sense to me to raise the speed limit from Lewis to Mills, which is two blocks long with a traffic light in the middle. And how are you going to get up to that speed, anyway?
I think it would be good to have them come.
Okay.
You know, and explain how that, what the rationalization is. Mr. Girard, did you have a comment?
Yeah, when do, when do they actually do the study? Do we have the results on, at what time of the year, and whenever they do it?
Uh, that, I didn't.
Can we ask for that?
We certainly, but we, they did not give us that information.
Okay. No, I'd just like to see that, because if we could have done enforcement during that period of time when they plant those out there, we could have tried to influence what the speed was.
My other comment was, as you all know, we did a plan for traffic calming, you might call it, for Michigan Avenue after we did the blueprint a number of years ago, and we have a plan on the city website that includes some mechanisms for slowing traffic along this corridor, which is exactly where they're talking about raising. So when Todd actually sent the email, and we talked about it, I want to make sure that the MDOT doesn't say, well, your speeds are so high, you can't accommodate this, because this is basically, I mean, it's pushing us in the wrong direction. And so if you can make sure that goes in the file with where our conversation is with either MDOT or the reconstruction, or, I don't know where it belongs, but I don't want it to get lost in, because, you know, as everybody knows, we've been postponed now because there's no transportation money to do the reconstruction, which therefore will postpone the streetscape, which therefore will postpone the traffic calming to 2017, and I, you know, my fear is that, you know, if it takes that long, it's going to get lost in, oh, well, these are the speeds, and this is how it's supposed to be, which isn't really what we want. I mean, we have spent a lot of time and effort in a community to try to make, you know, pedestrian-friendly community, and that's probably one of the biggest complaints we get, is Michigan Avenue, so. So if, Todd, if you can make sure that it gets maybe in everybody's file that would be touching any kind of conversation when it reconstructs, so it doesn't get lost, I think that's really imperative.
Well, do.
So if there's no further discussion on that item, Senate Bill 137, Mr. Girard?
Yes, Mayor, I thought it was important that I bring this up and basically address this. This is what's called Matt's Safe School Law, and I think a lot of people are familiar with it, what our state senate just recently passed, where they, it's an anti-bullying law, but included in it a, an issue regarding an exemption for moral and religious beliefs. And at this point, the senate has passed it, but it looks like the House is not in favor of the similar type of inclusion, and I'm encouraging individuals to contact Mark Womack or any of the other members of the House to encourage that they look at passing an anti-bullying bill that will not include this type of language. As one individual has stated, it said a religious person would never need to, would never need to bully, so why would we include this in the document? From my perspective, this is one of, not only one issue, but many other issues that are seeming to take power out from underneath the individual communities, but also impacting certain individuals. So at this point, and when we just had mentioned in our strategic plan about a diversity initiative, I would like to look into a task force that would address these type of issues, anti-bullying, discrimination, those type of aspects, because it's clear that there's aspects and things that are happening at the senate and in the House that are looking to be more regressive than progressive for the state, and we're looking at losing individuals and potentially losing businesses and other activities that I think we, as a community, need to discuss and basically try to help address this. The anti-bullying thing for myself is quite an issue, because we had this occurrence out at the schools, and that we also have had seen it, seen individuals committing suicide as a result of this, and there is no reason for this to occur. If individuals feel that life is not worth saving in the senate, then I think we've got to do some changes to make sure that that is put across, that we're trying to save lives.
Are we going to talk, you want to talk about this further?
Yeah, if we could. I think it's something that we would look into in the new year with the new council.
I know, we've talked about trying to partner with the schools in the past, so.
Yep. It's more of a community-wide event that we bring in individuals from around the whole city.
Maybe we can put together some, like an outline structure, bring back to council on what this would look like.
All good.
Any discussion or comments on this, that issue? No? Okay, I think that's it. Is there any other discussion items? Mr. Rhodes?
I have three quick, small ones. I just wanted to tell everybody about the farmers market grand opening on November the 19th, ribbon cutting at 9 o'clock in the morning, and that's at Liberty School. The market was there this last Saturday, and I was not there, but I heard that it went well. We have, I believe they had 30 vendors signed up, which is about 12 more than what we had in the summer market. So Nancy Crisp is happy, and, let's see, the other thing was a reminder about voting tomorrow, and wish all the candidates well in their, in their efforts. Thank them for, for their efforts in running, and campaigning, and wanting to represent our community. And then the last thing was I wanted to remind everyone about Veterans Day on Friday, November 11th, and like to, on behalf of, I'm sure not only myself, but all of us up here, to thank those men and women who are currently serving and who have served in our military. We would not be the country that we are without those folks, so I thank them. That's it for me.
Any, any other discussion? Under public comment under the Open Meetings Act, any citizens may come forth this time, make common requests to City Council, this public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, and when we'd like to speak is request, if not required, to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary has 600 Canterbury. The first time I got interested in the cemetery was the late 60s, when the wall was starting to pull away from the mausoleum. And it took a little bit of time, but that was perpetual care that fixed that. In 1914, when the Celine Mausoleum was built, though I don't believe that it was paid for with cemetery perpetual care funds. It appears from my contacts with the state of Michigan, on the rules and regulations of the proper spending of our cemetery perpetual care fund, there are some concerns about being it spent for land development. Also, my one reason of watching the cemetery perpetual care, I was gone for a year and came back, and the auditor told came back, and the auditor told about a loan that had been made from the cemetery perpetual care fund, and I think Noel Allen was here then, and Mr. Rubel, and it was taken out to, I understand, Finish Old Creek Drive, which was not legal. And after I got back and counseled Mr. Grossman, and we talked, and the money was put back. But that was something that did happen, and I can't remember what audit, but I can look it up. I think that if we want to do excessive dirt moving, I think that it should either be bonded, or it should be taken from the general fund. Anything, when you look up the state on perpetual care, it is maintaining and taking care of what is there. It is not for development of making profits. I appreciate the city manager and a couple council members going to see the mausoleum, and the new niches are great, but it is, it needs to be cleaned up. The one room that Mr. Campbell said is a supply room is a dump. And it has American flags on the floor that's been there for quite a while. And as he said, this is a supply room, but I have a shed in my backyard, and I also have a catch-all room. And it doesn't begin to look like this room that has never been taken care of in the last twenty years. And I think perpetual care should fix the mausoleum, so the niches may be spent and purchased. The contracts that were made with the people who bought the lots, it was never their understanding that it was anything other than perpetual care not to increase the cemetery or Karpinski's property.
It's not, we have upcoming meetings. November 21st, work meeting at 6:00 PM, regular meeting at 7:30, December 5th. Regular meeting at 7:30, December 19th, regular meeting at 7:30. We need a motion to convene into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular, to discuss a confidential written legal opinion, subject to attorney-client privilege. City council, we will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session.
We have to convene into closed session.
Moral?
Second.
Second Girba. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Girback?
Yes.
Councilmember Morrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll?
Yes. We adjourn at eight, eighteen. End the closed session and return to open session.
So moved.
Second. Girba, second Tahar. And we need roll call vote on that?
Councilmember Tahar?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Girback?
Yes.
Councilmember Morrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Mayor Driscoll?
Yes. Okay, we're reconvening to open session, and we have a motion to authorize the city attorney to proceed in accordance with the city attorney's confidential written legal opinion, subject to attorney-client privilege, as given during the closed session earlier this evening. We have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Girba, second Morrow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we need a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-seven?
So moved.
Morrow, second Tahar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.